I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands: A nation under God, indivisible, liberty to cuss to the pro.
Okay, welcome everybody to the September 4th meeting. Had a couple of hiccups tonight. Earl's flight was a little bit delayed, and he will not be here. And Commissioner Gibbons called, and he's got an illness. And I don't believe he'll be here either. So you got the three of us, the best-looking three out of the group. So we're here. Charlie, Earl, you didn't hear that? Okay, minutes of August 21st meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Summum.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. We have a motion to approve the financial report.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Town administrators' report. We're gonna have a discussion on 101 West Main Street, but we're gonna do that in the closing. Okay. Assistant town administrator, acting, acting!
Thank you, sir.
There you go.
You have before you a memorandum of understanding with Think Big Network. They made a presentation on August 21st. And the I R O U is before you, the draft I R O U. I know that John and Mark have been working for the past few days over it, so if you could give me a minute?
Sure, I think we're at a meeting of minds, so to speak. There are some minor changes that need to be done. For example, it references the city of Elton versus Calhoun. There's some just minor changes that need to be done there. There was recently, Mark added a paragraph, I think it was five?
Five point two.
Five point two, that we've been looking at. But I think that the suggestion would be, let's authorize us to move forward pursuant to the memorandum of understanding. Right now, it's written as though it was a contract, but title it as a memorandum of understanding, and proceed forward and allow them to draw permits, at least initial permits, to proceed pursuant to that memorandum.
Well, listen, there's no one that wants fiber optics more in this community than me and Mike Devine over there. I know he's grinning from ear to ear. It'll make a world of difference for our community, and we're working off of technology that was put in early '70s. And we'll finally have an opportunity to have something for our residents of our town that I think will be great, quite frankly. So I'd like to ask the board to go ahead and make a motion to move forward with the memorandum of understanding.
Mayor, before you proceed any further, there is the issue of permit costs. And we're not asking that they be waived, but just the normal permit cost related to what they're doing.
Very good. So if the board will authorize me, I guess is what you're asking, to move forward with the memorandum of understanding, tweak the agreement, but to move forward on so that this, so we can move forward with the Think Big Network.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's go, let's get some fiber put down. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the lease for Hollisworth Manor. Go ahead, town administrator, lay us on us.
So just for a brief history, the town and the Arrowman Development Corporation executed a lease agreement on September 27th, 2016, for property located at 200 B Hollisworth Manor. The family education center. And then, August 16th of '23, the town and M R D C amended the lease so that they could exclude a 1.194 acre portion of the property so that the Paris Foundation could offer its community services. So subsequently, the Paris Foundation requested that that piece be subdivided out, and a lease for them, not a sublease, but a lease for them to construct a building to be able to expand their services and so forth to the community. As an FYI, once that building is completed, it will become the town's property, so you can't sell because of our deed restrictions that we have from the federal government. So all that being said, Lewis drafted a lease, I believe, in June. And Paris Foundation came back and asked for some revisions. I sat down with Council McNugly a couple of days ago, and we just sat down and went through those drafts. So what we came up with, as opposed to, I think Lewis wanted a 10-year lease, Paris Foundation asked for 99, so we decided a 25-year lease was appropriate. Additionally, I just told you that the building will become the town property. Pretty much everything else is pretty much boilerplate. So I'm asking the board to accept this lease with the Paris Foundation for a 25-year term.
Do we have a motion to accept the lease agreement with the Paris Foundation?
Summum.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you for working it out.
Let's get that building built.
A minute.
All right. All right. Deed right-of-way, Phase One, Commerce Center Drive. Present it for approval.
You have before you this mentioned deed, and it is pursuant to the public works agreement in which the developer constructed the street, sidewalks, water and sewer infrastructure, and stormwater management for Commerce Center Drive, Phase One. So this is just, we enter into a public works agreement at the beginning of the development, work our way through when it's completed. We expect it, we accept the improvements, and then they present a deed to us.
Very good. We have a motion to enter into the public works agreement with Phase One Commerce Center Drive. Present it for approval.
It's the deed, sir, not the public works agreement. It's the other public works agreement.
It's the deed, gotcha. What about Jean?
Sure. I will make that motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second on accepting the deed. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we got a public works agreement. Graymount's comments, present it for tentative approval. Pay that on it.
That's correct. This is for Graymount Commons, which was, the original flat was recorded Section 1, November of 1982, and Section 2, November of 1995. The original developer has tentatively sold this development of 187 townhouses to X J 2 LLC, and they will be the successor developer. They're gonna go to settlement on September 13. And Chip is online, and he should be unmuted if you have any questions for him.
I can give you a little background, if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
A couple of things. Of course, this was approved back in the '90s. It's a similar layout to Buttonwoods with regard to parking. So we had the developer, Bruce Schneider, come in, and we worked with him, and he deleted a few lots and created additional parking so that we got the parking rationale up to where it needs to be to today's standards. Added sidewalks, which, believe it or not, this was approved with mulch paths originally. And it will be, the townhomes will be constructed by N B R, which is Ryan Homes, which will subsequently take over the H O A, which, they're usually pretty good at dealing with all of that, so it should not be a problem for the town. They also have their own trash service, so it won't be a burden on the town for trash. You know, hopefully, it's gonna be a little extra traffic in that area, but hopefully, you know, nothing that will be a problem.
Very good, thanks, Chip. We have a motion to accept the public works agreement, tentative approval, so that we can move forward with a closing.
Well, I did have one question.
Yep.
Oh, regarding the parking. You mentioned it was similar to Buttonwoods, but I assume that we're going to try to avoid some of the pitfalls that we have with Buttonwoods?
Yes, we've had to add extra parking so that the number of parking spaces is sufficient for today's requirements. Plus, this will be managed by Ryan Homes, H O A. So the town will not have to be involved in issues with parking spaces.
Will they have assigned spots, do you know, Chip?
I don't know how they do that. I can check with them and get back to you with that information in the future.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve the tentative approval, so we can move forward with a settlement.
Summum.
Second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Is that it?
That is it.
Hey, look at that, okay. Jean, you have anything this evening?
No, but speaking of parking, have we done any more on Buttonwoods?
I can tell you that I'm still playing with it a little bit, but there's still a lot of room to go.
Okay, yeah. That's fine, thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, no.
Robert?
Well. I had something.
Yeah.
But I did wanna mention that the addition of the light-it stop sign, the flashing lights on the stop sign, seems to have improved situation dramatically. Because I stand out there and I watch, you know, when I can. And there's a big improvement on people stopping at that sign. Have you noticed? At least I had to have them all around town.
And Dan, we also spoke about when the road restoration project initiates, I've asked that they reapply the sign on the road, the decal, "Stop Ahead," nice and large. It's faded, but that was painted "Stop Ahead." Right about by your shop, I think.
Yeah?
Hopeful.
Anything to help?
Yeah, that lighted sign seems to be doing a pretty good job.
You're welcome.
He doesn't, he doesn't want, he doesn't want children to go up there. No, because I tried to get that sign. Well, Jean made it happen. Great job.
Now I feel better, thank you. I think there's a couple places in some neighborhoods that I see competitive problems come plates, like Wayholme, you know, going into the neighborhoods. I guess we can bend it as we go.
I think so, I think.
We have another one, right?
Yeah, I think we have two. You got two other signs, don't you, Dan?
We got one left, yes, and one.
Do you have an idea where, or Chief, would you have an idea where it should go? Next, huh? Not yet.
I would actually almost say at Bow Street and High Street, because the folks that come out of the hospital, either they stop or they don't stop, I don't know.
I don't know if it'd confuse them.
I know, it probably would confuse them a little bit more. Well, we'll get that figured out. We'll find. I did want to bring one other thing up.
Yep.
Have we ever considered banning tractor trailers from coming down North Street, trying to make a left on the Main Street? There's signage the whole length of the road. They're not supposed to be coming down there, that's correct. Do we need better signage?
I think the issue is GPS.
Yes.
We need to make it really visible to these guys, because it gets pretty hairy. A couple weeks ago, one guy, Alicia, he may have seen it, had to literally back his tractor trailer the length of North Street all the way back to High.
I backed some up myself recently, so I know what you're talking about. I think if you did that, it'd have to be right on 279 at North Street, on both sides, because that's the problem. They're coming in, they can make it there, and then they're gonna be town, and they can't make the High Street turn.
GPS.
We're all searching for GPS.
I thought some of the truckers that get caught, and they said that they, just the traditional GPS they're using, that's how it pays them. I think there is a GPS that truckers use that might take different directions and give warnings about things like that, but I think just are every day. It's just gonna take them the fastest, quickest route. But I think the signage back further, like 279, that's what it's gonna have to take.
Hey, girl, I get flashing lights on it. Thank you, Anthony.
So I spoke to State Highway about the signage. State Highway believes that the signage is sufficient, and they did not want to add more signs, because if they add signs, the signs would be past the point the truck should be. I talked to Dan about it, and we could potentially add our own signs, but State Highway was unwilling to add any additional signage. They felt like the signs at 279 and North Street, and then the signs as you came over the bridge were sufficient, despite us telling them there was another problem. I reached out a week ago to M D T A. They have Commercial Vehicle Enforcement, and asked if they would be willing to come up and try to help us with that. So just waiting to hear back on that.
That'd be great, thank you. Rob, you have anything else? Okay, Dan, do we own the road going into the Y M C A?
We didn't know it. No.
Is that owned by the Y M C A, do we know? Or do you, you know, just?
I know it's not mine, I can research that, I'm not sure.
Perfect. I was asked to see if that's something we can do to pave that. It's not our road, we're not gonna do it, but maybe we can find out who's responsible, what's happening. There's some potholes on it, and the folks that, instead of driving over the potholes, they veer into the other lane to avoid the potholes, and there'll probably be a wreck there. Last week, and maybe you can help us with this, Dan, Infomark provided us with some levels of the, I think it's geosomin, in the water because of the algae. I'd like for them to give us another reading so that we can see that they're going down. I'm pretty sure they're going down, but I think we need to be on that every week just to make sure that they are going the right way. Because we shut the raceway down, and we're bringing water in from, additional water from Artesian at this point, so.
We have a meeting about that tomorrow.
Perfect. That would be great. And I know the gentleman is in here tonight to talk about the pavilion, but I'd also like to ask the question. Mr. Shivery had contacted me in regards to trapping around the wastewater treatment plant. Not shooting, but trapping probably muskrat? You'll come up and answer the questions there in a minute. Who do we need to see about that?
I would believe D and R.
Yeah.
That would start with D and R.
Well, D and R's gonna say it's our call, but it's not firing a shotgun or a weapon. I think anyone can, in a waterway, should be able to stake out and say that they can trap.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. So we'll get you an answer on that, unless you've already received an answer.
You might not take D and R about that. I haven't, I haven't gotten an answer yet, but.
Well, listen, come on down, Mr. Charles Shivery, come on down, because we need to talk about the pavilion.
Yes.
Have a seat there, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
So, on the, I don't believe that you need anything from the town of Elton, but you need access into the wastewater?
It's the old work treatment plant, and like the marsh behind the Acme.
Yeah.
Years ago, I used to do it when I worked here.
Yeah.
And I just needed a written permission thing,
Okay.
which is in the law books.
Okay.
Saying that I'm allowed on the town's property. So the D and R, whatever would come in, or somebody would file a complaint and say, well, there's somebody on the town property doing something. I have permission.
And are you trapping for muskrats?
Muskrat, right.
Okay, very good.
You know, and stuff like that. But like I said, years ago, I used to do it when I was an employee here.
Take a look at that and see, because if I can give permission, we're gonna give permission.
But that's, that's the way it was back in the past.
Listen, we wanna get those things out of there.
Yes, yes, I understand.
And it's not hurting anything to get rid of the muskrat?
No.
It's healthy for our whole area.
Yes.
All right, fire away about the pavilion.
Well, we rented a pavilion for salary for a memorial for my sister-in-law, she passed away. And I assumed that everything was perfect condition, just like it was in the past many years when I was an employee here. Never went and checked it, had some people show up, and then I showed up after the memorial at the funeral home, and it was totally a disgrace. I mean, totally disgrace. There were dirt on top of the tables, herb boots up on top of the tables, the concrete pads completely covered under silk, and there's grass and stuff growing. And I mean, to me, that's a disgrace to the town of Elton. Because I know that when I was an employee here, we started Wednesday. Every Wednesday, we would start mowing the grass and stuff, and then by Friday, we'd make sure all the pavilions was in tip-top shape. Four people that were turning them for the weekend. And if there was any silk or anything, we'd wash it off.
I think you're 100% right. We shouldn't be taking anyone's money if we are not sure that those pavilions are in 100%.
And I also left a message for Mary. Did you get a hold of me? And I'm still waiting for her to call me back.
She's moved it from the office.
She's on vacation.
And we have, we heard you loud and clear, and there's been action taken, and we're gonna refund you your money, of course, but that doesn't.
I understand. And I talked to one employee, and he informed me that Public Works no longer handled that. That was under parks and rec, which parking recs always rented out to pavilions, but Public Works always took care of the park and took care of the pavilions.
And I can't answer that. Dan, do we normally take care, we take care of them, don't we?
We just, maybe we do the grass, yeah, we do many of them and stuff, yes.
Okay. Well, it won't happen again. I really appreciate you coming forward, and I know.
If I was like most people, I would bless it all over the face of it. But I'm not that type of person.
Yeah, I kinda wanna thank you for not doing that.
Appreciate that.
You know, I'm not that type of person. I mean, I've always been proud about the town of Elton, because I worked here for 18 and a half years, you know, and I left here in 2008. And I mean, I just, I can see some things going backwards. That is, it's a shame to see some things going backwards instead of staying forward.
Well, I'm glad you brought it to our attention. I mean, frankly, I was embarrassed, and I can't imagine.
Oh, I was embarrassed, because I mean, like, I, there was people that actually had dress slacks on and stuff like that and sat down. They got up there, there were dirt all over their clothes.
Yeah, yeah. And it just makes me worry about what have we been doing all summer?
I mean, I know that whenever we would have a storm, right after the storm and the park started drying up, all hands on deck, everyone on deck, they would clean that park up, they would make it spotless and look good.
Well, listen, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and it will be addressed.
Okay.
And thank you so much.
I do have one question, back to your trapping. When you bait your traps for the muskrats and rac creams, just.
You don't bait, actually, you don't bait for the muskrats.
You're just setting them?
You just set them in the, like, in the runways.
I'm wondering about the dangers to the beavers of the creek.
Um, no, because they're smaller, they're smaller traps. They're real small traps, it won't bother them. They tend to be like a little, like four by four square.
Yeah, what you mean.
You know, they don't, it doesn't bother them. And plus, I don't set them on their runs, you know, where they go to.
Very good.
Now, we can capture fox when you do this, or?
I mean, yes, we can trap fox, if I see you guys. Yes, if you guys are running us to trap fox and, you know, I mean, the front line, we, you know, we trap fox, we trap coyotes, we trap pretty much whatever, you know, that we're, you know, allowed to as of when the people allow us.
When is it time to, you can capture a beaver?
A beaver, I think it's in October, November. I can, I mean, I can get the law book up, and I can meet up with you or whatever, and let you go through it.
Very good.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have anything to say for the good of the town of Elton? Mr. Andy Rodriguez, come on up. You guys are next.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Sorry for this last minute. I sent an email last week about a little nuanced request change to the employee handbook in regards to prescription safety glasses reimbursement for D P W employees. And I know it's, I don't know if you would like to put it on the agenda for next week, or if it's something that we could possibly consider approving today.
I think that the change that you had here was the additional uniform and safety attire related expenses.
Yes, sir.
And it's making the employees eligible for $50 calendar year prescription safety glasses reimbursement. Is that the change?
Yes, Mayor.
You guys have any issue with that?
Oh, no.
None?
Not at all. I mean, is that gonna like?
You know, I don't think we need to do all this.
Actually, yes, because it's going to be amended to the employee handbook.
Can we vote off of this right now?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the change in the expenses and reimbursement policy?
Summum.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, Commissioner, so it will help them. We will assist the D P W employees on referring different vendors to get their glasses, and that will assist lowering the cost.
I mean, do you know how much these things are?
Well, I did a test for myself. So with my prescription, I went online to one of the vendors. Glasses, prescription goggles for my prescription, and it was like $80, so the town, yeah.
All right.
Now, that doesn't cover all the employees with the different prescriptions, but.
Right, but it's better than I thought.
Exactly, yeah. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shivery.
Thank you.
Yes, I mean, when, as of when I was an employee here, with the safety glasses, they were always 100% paid for because it was a requirement that we had to have safety glasses.
Thank you.
But we have safety glasses.
No, no, I mean, prescription safety glasses. They were 100% paid for through the town of Elton.
Yeah, I don't know where the change happened.
I don't know either.
Thank you, that's something we should take a look at. Maybe it's in there, I don't know. All right, I think we had another group, come on up, if you want to. Please state your name and.
Fred Hill.
Hey, Chris.
Hi.
And here's this guy you're with?
Yeah, figured everybody would recognize him. So we've been charged, Donnie and I, in addition to Rob Mueller, has been charged by the president of Singerly Law and the Board of Directors to come report to you folks on at least a monthly basis, and not in addition to your workshop. So what I kinda wanna do is I wanna kinda give you guys an update on the now calls the month before. Okay, so last month, there was a total, so we responded to a total of 563 E M S runs. Of those, 337 were in-town limits. We responded to, in addition to that, we responded to 152 fire rescue calls, In addition to that, we responded to 152 fire rescue calls, combination between town and the rest of our district. In addition to the thousands of hours of our volunteers putting in volunteer at a time, we had a total of last month of 4,220 career service hours, totaling $127,000 for the month for our payroll. So kind of, we kind of wanted to come, especially introduce myself, or you know Robbie and Mr. Hicks, and we have two events coming up. The one in September, on Saturday, September 28th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Singerly will be having an open house at 300 Newark Avenue for the public.
Oh, well.
Everybody please come.
We did put that out there for you.
And in October, it was a very successful event in the past, and wanted to make sure that we give everybody ample notice, October, Saturday, October 19th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., we're going to do our annual trumpet, trinkle treat in the parking lot of the firehouse. And we have the flyers, like I said, to you folks, if you guys so wish, but we just kind of wanted to bring that, hold this up for your attention, and again, introduce ourselves. Let's see if you had any questions that you think.
Well, thank you. You know, we continue to say that we've got the finest fire department, fire emergency management service in the country with Singerly, and it'll probably get better as Donnie exits, but it's done a great, great job out there.
I'm there like you, Rob, just to poke them.
That's right, that's right. You do a great job. You know, it's, I really appreciate, I know, many years of service, and many years of service, and you guys do a great job, and we've tried to figure out ways to continue to help fund Singerly even more, because the town couldn't do it, we couldn't do it. We all recognize that, and we know how important your team is, and I appreciate you guys coming, because I think that's what we need, ongoing communication between us, and I think things will always be better.
You know, it's a two-way street. Anytime anybody has a question, I mean, I see them sometimes coming through town, and I'll, I'll address them on that issue with speed or something like this, and we're always open for dialogue, that's for sure.
Thank you.
And that's what we need.
Yeah.
Probably last year, between the combination EMS and fire, we ran over close to 7,000 calls.
That's amazing.
So we're on, we're on that.
Did you say in what time period?
Last year.
Twenty-year, twenty-year.
So we're pretty much on track to probably at least hit that, and unfortunately, even more this year. Okay, we now have five ambulances in service. They had to prove to me my office president, we needed four. We have five that are on the street almost all the time now.
Well, you just said you had about 10 calls a day.
Yeah.
Right?
We're out to about 30 calls a day.
Yeah.
Between fire, fire, EMS.
Jean and I believe.
You know, I was a big advocate of the SARM. Nobody else in town likes the SARM. I thought it was the best public relations tool we had.
I think it's a great thing.
Because people would say at the end of the day, say, you guys are out all day long, busy, busy, busy. Now there's no SARMs, so basically, who they ask most of the people in the corporate limits now, they think it's a total paid department, so they hear no SARMs. Newark still blows their SARM, they blow it till a crew leaves the station. That could be, that could be a long time.
We only hear, we only hear the vehicles, really.
Yeah.
You know, we're all out of it.
But we realize how busy you are.
If the mayor and the commissioners would advocate, if we put the SARMs back in, there would be some of us who would be in favor of that. And then there's a lot of wouldn't be, because nobody likes to hear SARM blow.
And that's a different.
I thought it was a good public relations tool, that people would actually say, oh, geez, they're out, you know, SARM blew all day long, but now with paging and everything, you know, we've gotten away from that.
Yeah, but you would be running all day long now.
It would make, yeah.
I, I want to mention something else. I was at the, it's probably been two months, maybe three months ago, I went to the Cecil County Library, had my grandkids with me, we were, the, we went from there over to the swing sacks. They saw the fire truck coming in, so I said, well, let's go over and take a look at the fire truck. And I will tell you, you had three young people that bent over backwards to educate and be nice to the grandkids. So I mean, that's a compliment.
For future volunteers.
I tell you, it was a compliment. So whoever is working on those, they didn't, they didn't say, hey, we don't have time to talk to you. In fact, the one fellow ran inside and came back out, I think he cleaned his hands, and he came out, and he did a, did a great job.
They want to do that. We have a lot of committees, one of them is recruitment and retention, and that's what we need.
Really?
We recruit a lot of people, we honestly do. Most board meetings, we're probably taking in an average of maybe five to 10 people on an average monthly board meeting, but they use us as a stepping stone, because they get their training for free. Okay, EMS, as soon as they get that, they jump to Loudoun County, Virginia, Fairfax County, Washington. We got one busiest truck company in Washington, DC right now, one of our volunteers, he got a job down there. They use us as a stepping stone, which you can't blame them for that, but they're using us, and we get them for a couple of years.
Yep.
Okay, then they move away, a lot of them will come back to town, we repay them again their activity, but.
You get them for a couple of years, is that a stipulation to their training?
Paramedics, we offer a paramedic program, yes. Paramedics are asked to give us, okay, for their training, okay? EMT right now, EMT used to be, it's over 200 hours now, and we can be a furniture just firefighter one, it's over 120-some hours now. That's a lot of volunteer training, okay? But we, they're free trained, this is Maryland Fire Rescue Institute in most cases, but they, we, they train them, we pay them, they train our volunteers. We don't have a stipulation on the volunteers or such, but as paramedics, we're training these paramedics, we ask them to give us so many calls per year, we'll say reimburse us. Well, when they move on to a better job, reimbursement's not a real issue. They'll say, yeah, you know, she'll, I'll pay you back. It's a good, I mean, it's good for their career. We're using, a lot of companies anymore, volunteer, they use a stepping stone, so they get their training for free.
Very good. Well, thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you, of course.
Anytime.
Donnie doesn't get many people listening to him.
Most people don't answer me.
There you go.
Anyone else have anything to say for, Alicia?
First, I want to thank the board. I talked at a previous meeting about some security issues in our building, and we've already sent somebody out, probably courtesy of Dan, and have looked at our doors and looking at opportunities for replacing them, so thank you. We actually had somebody in our building over the weekend, two weekends ago. Everybody and their brother probably has a key over the last 20 years, so also looking at possibly rekeying our doors and getting new doors.
Good news.
On them, yeah, so thank you for that. And lastly, we have Call Fest next Friday and Saturday.
Are you ready?
I'm ready. We are sold out for spots, we are sold out for sponsorships, so we are ready to go.
And you have your speakers?
They're not working yet, but they're up, they're, they're not networked in yet, but Mike Brown's working.
Oh, okay.
Perfect.
And your banners?
Banners are coming, talk to Dan today, we'll have some of them hung on Friday, and the rest will be hung on Monday.
Well, you're good to go. There you go. Thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
I forgot one thing. I would be remiss if I didn't know, and I know you all know, Mr. Anthony is mine back here, served his community war with EPD, he decided he'd like to join the fire department.
Hey!
And he did. He became an EMT, and he's riding duty crew with us when he's not working at the town. So not all that he sees at the town, he sees it on our ambulances, and he's great, he's up there all the time. We really appreciate his effort that he's putting forth with us.
Thank you.
Hi, here, Anthony.
Anyone else have anything to say? Keith?
I just want to say that I see that Angelo did not raise his hand, but today Angelo